I call the motion, the meeting for September, I'm sorry, August 25th, 2021 to order. Roll call, please. Chair Gross. Here.
Vice Chair DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Onshin. Absent. Commissioner Quilty. Absent. Commissioner Lo.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
And Commissioner Salkin.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, would you all stand, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have anybody in the audience that might like to speak on anything tonight that's not on the agenda? Please come forward. Okay, seeing as how we have nobody coming forward, I'd like to have approval for the minutes for June 23rd. Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
Okay, that was art. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
S O O. Thank you. Any changes or any additions to it? Roll call, please.
We can do the regular.
Regular, okay. Got and have it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yep, staying. Not present.
Okay, thank you. No consent counted. Before we move forward, I would like to know how many people in the audience tonight are for the Town Center? Can you give me a show of hands? So, one, two, so we've got a few. Do you want to move forward with that then first, or?
Yes, Chair Gross, I'd like to request that we move the Town Center mixed-use presentation out first.
So, we're going to go ahead and go a little bit out of order and do the Town Center presentation first.
All right, so, good evening, Chair Gross and members of the Planning Commission. The Los Alamos Town Center Strategic Plan began as the city evaluated a new future for the Town Center for the past over 10 years. It started off in 2010 with the Cotella-Los Alamos Commercial Corridor Plan that incorporated the building of the medians that you see out there right now currently on Los Alo Boulevard. In 2015, the general plan update was done and that updated, also included updating of the zoning code to allow mixed use with physical street scape improvement shortly following. The intention of the Town Center Mixed Use, or what we call the TCMU Strategic Plan, is to present a market-based urban design and strategy for the Town Center to clearly illustrate to private realis, to clearly illustrate to private real estate, real estate interests, the potential of properties in the area, and to help attract development desired by the city. In this way, the Strategic Plan is also a marketing tool to assist with the city's economic development growth, okay? So, the Strategic Plan has so far engulfed, have meant, have done a lot of engagement with stakeholders, property owners, council members, commissioners, and nonprofit leaders. We've done online surveys with property owners, online surveys with planning commissioners. We have done one-on-one interviews with city council. We've done, because of COVID, virtual stakeholder meetings. We've done planning commission study sessions, and so today is, we're sharing the preliminary draft of the Strategic Plan for comments. We encourage you, the public, to comment and ask questions. So, again, the next step here is we're presenting our preliminary plan for comments, and then we will come back to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to council, and then ultimately, we go to council for adoption by resolution, okay? So, tonight, we have, you know, our consultant here from Placework that has assisted us in developing the Town Center Mixed Use. It's Mr. Alan Loomis and Mr. Logan Woodruff. They will take us through the presentation, and then at the end of it, we will have questions, Q and A session. We also have Tom Oliver, who is the city lead, and we also have Leslie Roseberry here, who assists the city as a consultant as well. So, again, I'm going to kick it off to Mr. Allen and Mr. Logan. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ron and Tom. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I see a lot of familiar faces I recognize from the very small squares on computer screens where we've been interacting for the past year on this effort, including in the audience. See some familiar faces as well. When we initially proposed to the city to help on this effort over a year ago, we thought we'd be back in in-person meetings in the fall. It didn't work out that way, so I'm actually very happy to be here in person in the city to talk about this project. As Ron said, the, this is, I believe, now our fourth public meeting or workshop associated with the Town Center Strategic Plan, and of course, this is the first time we get to do it in person, so very happy to be here. And I'm going to wait for Tom to bring up our slide presentation. While it's coming up, I would say our presentation this evening is going to be a little bit of an abbreviated presentation or walkthrough of the actual document that was included in the Planning Commission packet, so if you've seen it online, the commissioners, I'm sure, have looked at it. We're just going to kind of walk you through some of the way that document is structured, what we're saying in there, and some of the kind of key recommendations that the public and the Planning Commission should really give us some feedback on. I will say that this evening, our discussion with the commission is, and our purpose is very simple, it's to take the commission and the public's feedback on this plan. We're not asking you to render a vote tonight, as Tom said, that's going to come at a later meeting, we think, probably the next time we see you, we'd be asking you to make a form, a vote recommending the plan to city council. But tonight, we're kind of encapsulating in the document a lot of the conversation we've had over the past couple of months, a lot of different thoughts, and this is a draft version, there's still some graphics that we'll sort of embellish in the next go-around, but at this point, we're really looking for your thoughtful feedback so that we can make sure all those ideas are incorporated in the final version that we'll bring forward when we do ask you to render a vote and a recommendation to the city council. So, Tom, it looks like we're queued up to go?
I think we're queued up, but we have a random comment showing up on there, so we're trying to figure out how to get rid of that.
It looks like it's.
There we go. Okay.
Now, there's something funny happening again. TV land has intruded. It was, until my internet connection at home crashed, which has happened to me more than once mid-meeting. Somebody, I just kind of say next.
I think so.
The old-fashioned way. In the old days, we'd have a bunch of posters on the wall. Yeah, slide overheads. So, we'll go to the next slide since we did, so, as I said, we're looking for your thoughtful feedback this evening on this. So, we'll go to the next slide. The plan that we've produced in the packet has a couple of different chapters, and I'm not going to go through every single page, one by one, and read everything, and assume if you have an interest, you can actually read it. We'll say, one of the ambitions I've always had in crafting plans of this nature is to try and make them not very wordy, but essentially be a series of annotated drawings and plans so that it's very easy to digest the kind of core ideas. So, the first chapter, after we get through an executive summary of the plan, is an abbreviated existing condition statement, so we'll go for next. We did produce, early in the process, a much longer existing conditions report, some of that's included in the appendix of this version of the plan. So, we do start off thinking about the context as a city of Los Alamos. And, you know, one of the kind of key features of it, which will come to no surprise to anybody who lives here, is that you're surrounded by a lot of other highly amenitized locations. This does impact the way this, the Town Center's economic potential and development potential, particularly as it relates to attracting retail and restaurants. Many of the kinds of high-quality restaurants that you shop at, or stores that you would shop at, are located already within a five-mile drive of Los Alamos. So, for example, Trader Joe's is unlikely to open another store in the city of Los Alamos because they already have a store that's serving the city of Los Alamos nearby. And that's the case with a great number of different kind of retailers and restaurants. So, your context and the region does impact this way we think about the Town Center. Sites, next, please. The way we define the Town Center site is corresponds to the zoning that exists today. So, as discussed earlier in the housing element discussion, the Town Center site already has a mixed-use zoning designation that is in effect today. And so, we looked at the sites that are included within that zoning designation and sort of determined that is our site. Our charge, when we were hired by the city and through the grant that is funding our contract, is really to look at the Town Center site, so we really didn't expand our thinking much beyond the sort of properties that have this zoning. And we'll have another slide that gives you the context, but we're talking about sites located at the corner of Los Alamos and Cotella. It does not include the Rossmore portion, the southwest corner of that intersection's unincorporated Rossmore, it's outside the city's jurisdiction from a zoning and land use perspective, but it includes the other three corners. It includes south of Cotella, the commercial properties fronting onto Los Alamos Boulevard down to, but not including the Vaughn's Shopping Center at Farquhar. It includes properties going north up to Florista, and to the west, it goes out to Chestnut, so it's the entire block at that corner up to Chestnut. And then to the east, it includes out to Reagan Street, so it includes the Santa's Door and that block, but does not go as far as the hospitals. So, that's the boundaries that we're looking at. It's a, it amounts to just under 20 acres of private land. We're not counting all the land that's dedicated to streets and alleys, but developable land, it's just under 20 acres. As mentioned, this does have an existing mixed-use zoning designation on it that allows either residential office or combination of those kinds of uses within one building or one site, and a residential density of up to 30 units an acre. This is important because we are recommending that the city entertain, increasing that density as we get, once we get to the recommendations. So, next, please. So, we do provide in the plan, draft plan, we provide this aerial view, and this is a little bit turned around from the way we normally look at sites because in this case, we're hovering over the city on the north side, looking to the southeast. So, at the very top of this image and all subsequent images, you'll see Rossmore is to the top. So, this image is sort of hovering over Genal and the industrial areas, so the medical center is at the bottom left, City Hall is going to be at upper right. So, we do provide some imagery of the different sites and the kind of general overall urban character of the area, but just to sort of situate geographically where we are, this is, we have this set of illustrations in the plan. Next. Chapter two of the plan discusses the public engagement process. As Ron said, we've had a number of different engagements on Zoom and interviews with city council members, an online survey that was provided to the Planning Commission back in February, as well as to property owners within the Town Center area. Chapter two summarizes those processes and some of the comments and the general themes that came out of those discussions. And I will say, you know, in my experience working with different communities, I would say there's actually a surprising degree of consistency about what the vision for the Town Center should be by both stakeholders and by political leaders in the community. It's pretty astonishing having separate conversations with all the city council members to hear them say almost the same thing about what they hope the Town Center could be. That rarely happens in my experience working with communities, so I think you're in a very good place as a community because you have a very common vision, and the question is, how do you achieve that vision of building out a destination for the community? And I would, the way I would summarize that interest in destination was kind of telling to say that because of the quality of the schools here and the quality of the parks, people are able to gather at the schools and the parks in the community, but there's a desire for a third kind of place for the community to gather. So, you don't always have to come together at a school or a park, but there is a Town Center. And one of the things that often also came out of that is that, and I think this is a reflection of the family-oriented character of the community, is a place that's really focused around eating establishments. Like, it was a kind of recognition that not a lot of shopping, particularly post-COVID, is going to be coming to Los Alamos. Your neighboring cities are probably struggling to retain the retail destinations they have, but there was definitely an interest in sort of seeing the Town Center be anchored around restaurant and eating destinations of a variety of different kinds of quality of destinations. So, that has somewhat colored the way we think about the future, the planning process here. There's also a kind of common recognition that there are a number of key challenges, that is, Los Alo and Cotella, those two streets are very heavily impacted by traffic, that's a significant challenge, how you can move cars in and out of the Town Center with those two streets. They're also not at all conducive to having a kind of pedestrian-oriented experience. Imagine what it'd be like to sit in an outdoor cafe or those streeteries you see in some other communities where they sort of take over a parking spot. You know, doing that on Cotella Avenue not, would not be a very pleasant experience. So, that's obviously a pretty significant challenge. The other challenge is that the city owns one very small parcel of land in the Town Center, and the rest is held by private developers who have largely built out and have going business concerns on those properties. And it's a fragmented set of ownership with one significant exception. So, how do you incentivize, kind of coordinate a development of the Town Center is going to be a significant challenge. But there's some, there's some other challenges that are detailed in the report. Can we move to the, are we able to move to the next slide? Maybe? So, as I said, we did a number of public outreach meetings, the chapter two summarizes those in that process. We can move to the next one, please. So, the chapter three is very short, we call it a strategic framework. We thought it was important that we provide somewhere in the plan an overall drawing that said, what is the strategic plan? After all, we were hired to develop a strategic plan, we thought we should give you a singular drawing that says that, so if we could go to the next slide. We provide this sort of singular drawing, this is an elaboration of illustrations we've presented in the past in other meetings. Essentially, what we say is that we're recognizing there is a mixed-use designation within the Town Center, but within that, it's likely that as development comes forward, real mixed-use projects, let us to say, development that is retail on the ground floor and housing or some other use above, is likely to be focused around Pine Street and what we are calling the sort of the northeast corner of the Town Center. There's a couple of reasons for this, one of them is the, is Pine Street and just the sort of center of gravity that presents, we'll get into momentarily, whereas the other sort of parcels that sort of radiate out from that are more likely to be housing-focused. That being said, the mixed-use designation allows for anything to be developed, either any property developed as housing or office, so this is not, this is not setting in stone that this ha, this area has to be housing and this area has to be mixed-use, it can all be mixed-use, but we think just as the market evolves around this area, this is probably the sort of land use pattern that will emerge. There is also a fronting onto Reagan Street, starting with Santa's Door, a number of nonprofit and kind of community servicing facilities that we think are very likely just to stay as they are, so that's represented in the blue, kind of overlay on this particular graphic. So, we think the Town Center plan, as you see momentarily, really should be focused around Pine Street between Cotella and Florista. Next, please. So, we ended up then producing a series of recommended strategies that the city could pursue, and they would be pursued in a variety of different ways, as other public works projects, or zoning, or just sort of encouraging property owners to behave in certain ways, or kind of bring forward development projects of certain character. So, we'll go through those briefly. So, next. The first one, we call Mark the Town Center, and if you go to the next slide, it's another illustration of what we think should happen. One of the comments that we heard is that sometimes people just drive through Los Alamos, they don't realize there's a, there's a separate city here. You just cruise down Los Alamos Boulevard for miles and miles, or Cotella Avenue, and you never realize you've actually passed through the city of Los Alamos. And we think there's an opportunity for the city to plant some very significant street trees, such as the kind of King Date Palms, or like a Canary Island Palm, in this, where the street trees would be, and this would be something that the city could undertake within the public right-of-way. As it happens, the city controls the public right-of-way on the county side as well, so you could actually mark all four corners of the intersection with a pretty significant tree. I think the local example that a lot of folks might be familiar with is when you kind of pull into the Disneyland Resort and they have all those rows of palm trees, you know you're in a special place because of that street landscaping. And we think at the four corners of the Los Alo-Cotella intersection, the city should do something similar. So, even if nothing else happens, somebody driving down Cotella Avenue will sort of go, wait, I've just passed through this interesting landscaping, there must be something here, this must be a unique place. So, very simple kind of first recommendation that the city could undertake through its kind of urban forestry program. Next, please. So, we have a couple of illustrations of how we think this transformation can kind of enhance the intersection, and these are illus, these are early illustrations, we'll be updating these illustrations following this meeting, assuming we get concurrence from the community and the commission that this is a good strategy. Next slide, please. Another thought we had here is that, is this is an illustration of the sidewalks on these two major streets. We think that the city ought to require buildings to be set back from the property line a little bit further than is currently required so that you have, as you can see in this illustration, the palm trees, those would be the street trees in the public right-of-way on the public sidewalk, but basically, the shade trees that are behind there would be on private property. And so, we think that the new buildings should be set back, you know, anywhere between 10 and 12 feet from the property line. And so, that 10 or 12-foot setback between the shade trees and the new building facade could be used for outdoor dining. You know, now you're set back some 10 feet from the curb and separated by two rows of trees, so if there were to be outdoor dining fronting onto Los Alo or Almeida Boulevard or Cotella, you'd be set back in a kind of a more comfortable environment. The other thing is that this will make the sidewalks of both those streets a lot more pleasant to walk down. One of the other key ideas or concepts we heard is to encourage a connection to the medical center, and given the way property ownership is connect, is configured in the blocks along Reagan, along Reagan Street, there really isn't a very good opportunity for a mid-block pedestrian crossing from the Town Center straight into the hospital. So, walking down Cotella Avenue, for better or worse, is kind of the best and most direct route to get to the hospital. So, enhancing the sidewalks on Cotella in particular is one strategy for making that connection a little bit more direct and attractive. So, next, please. The other big idea we had, as I mentioned earlier, is to really reimagine Pine Street from Cotella and north to Florista, so that one block of Pine Street. Next. This is, this is accomplishing, this idea here has a potential of accomplishing a number of sort of strategies. The first is to create a really attractive place. So, we know that you have kind of food truck events and kind of town events that are either on Reagan Street and sometimes on Pine Street, and with an attractive, well-thought-out streetscape project with shade trees, adequate lighting, probably an adequate set of power to power up events and bands, et cetera, Pine Street could be in a really incredibly attractive street for various kinds of events. So, those would be the kind of events where you're closing the entire street down, you're inviting everybody in to, from the town to come to a town festival. The prototype that we ended up looking at, at the Planning Commission in previous meeting seemed to like, was the example that's in the tall image in the middle from Lancaster, California, Lancaster Boulevard. There, they did something a little bit unusual, if you can go to the next set of slides. There's an illustration of this, this is a little bit easier to read in the printed document or the document online, but what Lancaster did is they put their diagonal parking down the center of the street on a permeable pavement with shade trees down the center of the street and street lighting, and they have the attractive café string lights that go over the diagonal parking, parallel parking at the curb, and then just kind of typical ordinary sidewalks. So, when they do have a major event, they put all the kind of the farmer's market stalls or whatever's going to happen down the center of the street under the shaded area, and it's, from all accounts, is a very attractive place to have events. Lancaster Boulevard did this for about eight blocks of Lancaster Boulevard, and probably a little bit too long, and we're recommending you just do it for one on Pine Street, and it'll be nice and contained, and I think if you were to have a citywide event of some kind where you close the street and the config, and this kind of configuration, it'd be wonderfully attractive and sort of have a really attractive place, almost like a town square, but it's in the street. The other advantage this produces is that of the various kind of configurations of Pine Street we looked at, it produces the largest number of on-street parking, and we think this is an important idea for jump-starting development on Pine Street, that this reservoir of on-street parking can be something that future development, particularly the commercial components of that development, like restaurants, could use that on-street parking in effect as a credit. This is something that the city could do at a fraction of the cost of building a parking structure, which may need to come later. But one of the advantages is you build a reservoir of parking, and it's a very attractive place. Now, the catch is, is that probably you don't want to do this project, which would be relatively expensive compared to other streetscape projects you've done, certainly in comparison to the medians. You wouldn't want to do this until you have a commitment from one of the property owners fronting Pine Street that they're going to do something extraordinary, otherwise you'll spend a lot of money on a very attractive street that goes to the backside of other parking lots. And so, we'll talk later about implementation, and we think those things should come in tandem. Jump to the next slide, please. So, we have a cross-section of what the street should, could look like in terms of its dimensions. We'll move to the next slide. A building on this notion of Pine Street could be this incredible place, we think that the properties that front onto Pine Street really should be built out as a mixed-use core of the Town Center. And what we've illustrated is a number of those properties being built with a variety of different kinds of uses, and this has really been just an illustration to show that there's a lot of possibilities here. The large majority of this area is controlled by one The large majority of this area is controlled by one property owner, so if they were interested in participating in this vision, they could really jump-start and almost build out a pretty significant portion of the town center vision. So if we could go to the next slide. And then, actually, let's go to the next slide in the interest of time. So zooming into this area on the diagram, we've called out both existing uses, remaining, new mixed-use housing, that's to say, housing over retail. We've called out housing that is wrapped around a parking structure, which is something you see in South Orange County quite a bit, but it'd be a much smaller scale here in Los Alamos. Freestanding office, there's obviously probably an insatiable demand for medical office, so that could have a role. Freestanding retail. And we've even suggested this could be a good site for another hotel, another 100-key hotel, if the demand for that continues to exist. So in the course of our work, we've looked at about three or four different configurations of this area, and we can continue to explore those as alternatives. But this one sort of threw everything in the kitchen sink onto the site, and we thought that's a good place to start, to say there's a lot of possibilities here. One of the advantages of all these different uses is that from an economic development perspective, the city hasn't put all your eggs into one basket. You know, a hotel has a different kind of dynamic than retail does, than housing does. If you really went all-in with just a kind of retail commercial center, as soon as there's another upside-down turn in the kind of retail market, your town center kind of goes down with it. So diversifying the kinds of land uses you have in the town center is an important strategy for ensuring it's kind of long-term economic viability. It also helps, will help even out to some extent, the sort of traffic impacts that these various uses have.
Fourth idea we have is to create different kinds of places to gather. So in our illustrations of this mixed-use center, we're showing a kind of courtyard or plaza in the center of all these different kinds of uses on private property. We're also showing Pine Street. And we think this is also, there should be some exploration of how you can connect to the courtyard at Saint Isidore. So there's a variety of different kinds of places between streets and plazas and pedestrian walkways and courtyards that are all sort of interlinked, that as a pedestrian, you can move back and forth between those places with a great deal of comfort and ease. It would also allow you then, if you're having a major event, you could have a major event that's only focused on one of the plazas or only at the courtyard at Saint Isidore or only on Pine Street when it gets closed. Or you could have a coordinated citywide event where there's things happening in all those places. So I can imagine like a big citywide festival, you might have two or three stages going on with different bands and the different courtyards and, you know, food trucks or some sort of activity market happening on Pine Street. So it allows you a lot of different opportunities for different kinds of interaction and ways of gathering. Next, please. So there's no shortage of inspiring images to sort of in precedence for what these kinds of places could look like. Another key strategy is to provide a range of parking choices, and I will maybe dwell on this a little bit longer than some of the others because it's important and it's come up in a number of different conversations we've had with, in different workshops. So we've already mentioned that we think a reconfiguration of Pine Street can provide higher number of on-street parking than you currently have today and provide an attractive place to gather. We've also heard that we should not ignore the possibility or the probability that you may need a parking structure at some point in the future. So we think that's building structured parking when you need it is going to be one of the strategies that needs to be on the table. We've also heard, and it's the little arrow coming in from the lower left, that if you are having a major event where you've closed Pine Street, what we just said should be all your parking, you got to park somewhere else. And the hospital has built a very large parking structure that you could run shuttle buses out to the town center when you do have those major events. And so continuing to explore that option with the hospital and medical center is an important consideration as well. We are also thinking that there's other on-street parking that's available in the area that will be very attractive if the neighborhood, if the town center area really takes off as an economic and kind of destination. And that eventually, that may start to cause problems in the surrounding neighborhoods. And so at some point, probably not soon, but at some point, it may be necessary to entertain having preferential parking districts for residents only that surround, in the neighborhoods that surround the town center. So visitors and probably more likely employees of the town center aren't parking in the neighborhoods and causing traffic impacts in the neighborhood. I think if we get to that stage in the near future, you know, kudos to us, we've accomplished an incredible amount to generate a parking problem that's spilling over to the neighborhoods. But it's important to say that's a consideration that will probably need to be entertained if we're successful in kind of really getting all these ideas moving forward. Next, please. So our report then just sort of itemizes these different strategies. And there's, again, a lot of good precedents from far more urbanized communities that have really tackled with these and have a lot of good kind of, you know, prototype standards, et cetera, that you can work with. I will say, one of the other things that's really important moving forward, particularly in this day and age, is the technology behind this, that we have, you know, all of us have one of these things that we're driving around with and looking at more often than we should be, or we've got, you know, this data kind of keyed right into our dashboard. And so a lot of this information about where parking is located and the best place to park and how to quickly navigate there can be done through technology. And so technology potentially is a much cheaper and more effective way of kind of managing your parking than spending a lot of money to build a four- or five-story parking structure. So as the demand for parking increases in the town center, thinking about those kinds of strategies would be important because they are more cost-effective. I will say, we are not recommending that any new residential that's built in the downtown be parked at the hospital, parked on Pine Street, parked in some remote garage. We think in Los Alamos, new residential will want to be parked on-site. So new residents will have parking with, inside their building, and that's what the current code requires. We're not making, recommending any changes to that particular approach at this point. So as I mentioned, one of the ideas is mixed-use housing or housing development. And if we could go to the next slide. You currently allow mixed-use development and housing in the town center through the existing zoning. As I mentioned, we think the current allowed density cap at 30 units an acre should be increased up to 60 units an acre. It's a pretty significant increase, but it would still live within the existing height limits. That's an important thing to say, that we're talking about, you know, essentially a four-story building, three stories of housing over one story of some form of commercial development, retailer, restaurant. 60 units an acre can live within that height restriction. So that's what's currently allowed, so we're not talking about a Manhattanization, if you will, of the town center compared to current zoning. What's more likely and probably to me immediately popular is kind of the three-story town home. And you do see that throughout Los Alamos and this, in Orange County. And so it's a three-story town home because the first floor is largely occupied by your two-car garage, and then your second floor is your living space, and then the third floor is your bedrooms. There seems to be just a completely insatiable demand for that kind of development in Los Alamos. Every time it comes online and gets sold out immediately, it is typically built as a for-sale product, which is very attractive. And so that's going to be part of the mix. I think one of the challenges for the city is whether you accept a lot of that kind of development or whether you really try and hold out for a higher-intensity mixed-use development that will bring in other kind of economic benefits like the retail and the restaurants and the kind of community destinations that are, the town center aspires to. So that'd be one of the kind of key considerations. One of the other thoughts, and this comes from our economist in our office, that we think is kind of worth the city struggling with a little bit, is right now you do require retail on the ground floor as you front Los Alamos or Cotella. In the current real estate market, and this is coming off of the COVID heels with the retail market doing, you know, this kind of freefall that it's been going through, the feedback we're getting is that residential developers or developers of any kind and their investors are going to be very nervous about committing to a mixed-use development that is housing with some form of retail underneath it. There's a fear that that retail is going to sit vacant for a long time and comes with a heavy cost, and that may scare off potential investors and developers for quite a while. So one of the things that's worth thinking about and considering is whether you would allow residential on the ground floor fronting the two major arterials and under what terms. We can come up with some good design standards to make sure that that's a livable place, so you're not like walk out on your patio and immediately confronted with all this traffic. We can come up with some design standards. We can recommend that you embed into your zoning code so that if you were to allow residential on the ground floor, it would be, you know, a reasonably attractive place to live, but that would be a shift from your current policy. But we think, or economist thinks, that you will have residential developers who would say, if I can do all residential, I'm going to do that. I know I can bankroll that right now. I know I can get that to the market. I know that people will move into that space, and that's something that could happen relatively soon. If, you know, how long is it going to take for the retail market to kind of come back where ground-floor retail is going to be really viable is anybody's guess. Can tell you, if we, any of us had the answer to that, we'd be making a lot more money as a consultant and, you know, and telling all sorts of people what they should be doing. So nobody, including the folks in the retail market, have any notion of what's going to happen there. But another option for ground-floor retail is to really focus on live-work units. Those are units, and particularly in the kind of current market where everybody's been working from home and people have realized how attractive that is, they'd like to start their own business working out of home. Live-work may actually be like, you know, a really attractive option for Los Alamos. People may want to work from home, have a storefront where they're operating out of their house, fronting onto one of the boulevards, they can conduct business from a front door like that. That may be a very attractive option, too. So I think this is one I'm highlighting because I appreciate the commission's sort of thoughts on this matter. Our final strategy is to connect over to the surrounding neighborhoods, that the town center is really going to be a town center for the community, it needs to be a place that's easy to get to without necessarily having to drive. Fortunately, your recently passed active transportation plan calls for both Florista and Reagan Street being pedestrian and bike connections. At least one of those streets has currently a stoplight and a crosswalk. I'm talking about Florista at Los Alamos Boulevard. You do have a crosswalk and a stoplight, so it is possible to safely cross from the neighborhoods to the east into the town center area. We've recommended that the city look at doing the same for the crossing at Reagan and Cotella so the neighborhoods to the south can safely cross the street and get into the kind of core of the town center. And again, your recently adopted active transportation plan calls for both of those streets to be designated as bike paths. So encouraging people who are pedestrians and cyclists from surrounding neighborhoods to use their feet and their bicycle wheels to get to the town center instead of driving is also a kind of important key component. And as we mentioned earlier, encouraging kind of an attractive pedestrian connection to the medical center is also a kind of key idea that we, to make the town center really viable and enhance that connection to one of your kind of core employers. Next, please. So again, some very attractive pictures and lots of good precedents about how to design nice sidewalks and bike paths. Next, please. So the final two sections of our report deal with implementation and then some other rise background material. So the strategic plan in and of itself doesn't change any of the zoning or designations. It lays out a series of actions, and as you said, strategies that could come later. So next, please. So we've produced a chart that kind of comes back to all those key strategies and suggests what actions the city should undertake within a year of the strategic plan being adopted or within five years of being adopted. These are recommended timeframes, recommended actions, but it does lay out kind of a roadmap about how to kind of get from point A to this endpoint that we've described in our kind of pretty drawings. So right now, the draft that we have has a number of actions that are purely on the city side, but that being said, we do think if the plan is successful and new development is being built, property owners are investing, that there are going to be obligations on the property owner's side. That could include doing things like forming a property, a business improvement district based on property so that the property owners then could take over some of the maintenance and marketing efforts of the town center. This is done in every successful downtown you can think of. There's a business improvement district that takes on a lot of that work in partnership with the city. So that, those are some ideas that will come. So certainly, if you have thoughts about what other things, property owners' obligations they should have, and be open to those ideas as well. Next, please. So at the current draft, we simply outline a number of these different kinds of strategies, including amending the zoning ordinance, the general plan, et cetera. And so we haven't gone into details. We think the next stage, next time you see it, we may have some suggestions for actual red-line, strike-through versions of your zoning code. That'd be sort of draft amendment language. That would have to be adopted later, but we'll give you kind of a roadmap for that. Three ideas here that are worth sort of chewing on. One is a transfer of development rights. So the idea with the transfer of development rights is if I own a piece of property today that has 30 units an acre of development potential, but I know I'm not going to build any housing at all, maybe I can sell this sort of envelope of theoretical housing that I've got the zoning potential to build, but I'm not going to build to my neighbor, and he can build. And you would record that with a deed on the property. So then I sell my property 10 years later, and the property owner who buys my property doesn't come in and think, hey, I can build housing here because it was recorded on the deed. I have no, I've given up my housing rights because I sold them to my neighbor and he built those housing. So that's a thought and something worth exploring within the context of the town center. This actually could be a really interesting tool for the nonprofits in the town center that are likely to stay as they are and not interested in developing a lot of housing. The other idea we've suggested is to entertain an inclusionary housing ordinance. So the, or inclusionary housing ordinance is, as they're adopted in many other cities, essentially says that if you're going to build over a certain number of units, it's typically around 10 on a piece of property, that you now have an obligation to commit a certain number of your units, usually a percentage between like 5 and about 15%. I don't think I've ever seen anybody go up to 20%, but a certain percentage, it's called 10% of your total units, should be dedicated or deed to affordable housing incomes. So that's all pegged with your market rate, your above median income, et cetera. And there are different ways those kinds of inclusionary housing ordinances can be constructed. So you could kind of tier it down and say like, well, one of them has to be a very low income, another one could be a modern income, et cetera, and then the balance can be a market rate. So we think you should entertain doing an inclusionary housing ordinance in tandem with increasing the allowed density. So right now, your allowed density in the town center is 30 units an acre. If you're to entertain increasing it up to 50 or 60, we think you should adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance with it so that you're not simply giving property owners now suddenly double their development potential with nothing in return for the city. And you could say, we're going to allow you to build this higher development potential, but we think you need to help us with our affordable housing obligations and mix of units. So that's an idea we've put on the table, we think the city should explore and entertain. And the last idea relates to Pine Street, that if you're to rebuild Pine Street and provide a pretty significant amount of public parking on Pine Street, that you would have some form of parking credit that would apply to properties that have frontage onto Pine Street that says, you developer or property owner who has property on Pine Street, if you come forward and you bring in a retail use or restaurant use that's attractive to us, that builds out our town center, we will allow you to reduce the amount of onsite parking you're required for that retailer/restaurant use because you're going to be able to use a portion of what we, the city has built on Pine Street. And I think probably the simplest way to do that, you'd have some sort of prorated formula that says, there's 100 parking stalls on Pine Street, and for every 10 feet worth of parking frontage, you get one reduction in your onsite parking requirement. And we can kind of dive into some details and make a recommendation on that. But this is a strategy or an idea about allowing property owners who are going to bring forward and be kind of early investors in your town center to participate in that kind of reconstruction of Pine Street. So that's one of the sort of thoughts that we have in terms of a strategy, implementation strategy. Next, please. And I'm nearly finished. So how do we get started on this? So we think the first project very likely could be the reconstruction of Pine Street. As I mentioned, it will be a relatively expensive project compared to other streetscape projects the city has undertaken. As I said, probably doesn't make sense for the city to embark upon this unless there is a commitment from one of the property owners or more than one of the property owners on Pine Street to do some significant development, so it's a worthwhile place to go to. And as it happens, the city does own a small parking lot fronting onto Pine Street. So one thing the city could entertain doing is putting out a request for development interest or interest or qualifications or proposal even to say, we, the city, control this one piece of land and we would like our town center to get started and we're interested in development partners who could consolidate property adjacent to that land and bring forward a kind of exciting project that sort of jumpstarts the town center. The city would then be able to have some degree of leverage and control about that very first project because the city would be a partner through its ownership of the land to be able to sort of determine what kind of project the city would like to see come forward. So that could be, you know, the really exciting commercial development with market rate housing. It could be a fully affordable housing project that has some other components that help starts the town center. And, you know, it could even be a parking garage, for example. But we think combining Pine Street plus this kind of development potential with where the city does have some small controlling interest could be a kind of exciting way to gauge development interest and kind of building out your town center and kind of participating in this vision. Next, please. So the very conclusion of our report is an appendix of other background data and I will move through this relatively quickly. Next. We have a full inventory of all the existing sites in the town center that we've pulled off of a mixture of data, but includes kind of property, accounting property assessments. So next slide is an example. This is a full inventory, kind of at a gross level, but the next slide, please, is one sample. We've clustered these into blocks and we've inventoried all the blocks, so we understand how much square footage of retail or commercial, et cetera, approximately is located on there, approximately how many cars are parked on each site, photographs of the various kinds of uses that are located on there. So we have a pretty good understanding of the existing uses within the town center. And all that background, that information's all included in the appendix. So another example of this kind of site inventory, and the different colors here represent different ownerships. So you can see this one particular block has a variety of different owners and it does make the process of sort of imagining and kind of coherent development quite challenging because a lot of different parties have to agree to kind of all swim in the same direction. A lot of the illustrations that we've produced in the preceding chapters of the document are based on a kind of development scenario where we looked at about 15 different sites and kind of made some best guesses as to what the development potential of those sites could be under the strategies and the kind of parameters that we've set forward. And so the next slide provides an itemized inventory of those different sites and what we think the development potential could be. A development scenario A is what we've shown in the plan and other illustrations. And the very bottom line there is that it could yield up to 400 new residential units. This is a pretty significant number. This assumes a lot of properties are building out at that four-story mixed-use development at close to 60 units an acre. Next slide. We have another scenario that looks at a different combination of sites and a different mix of kinds of uses. This scenario is a little bit more heavy on the three-story townhome kind of development. And so when you look at the next slide that provides an inventory of that set of scenarios, this ends up being more around 200 units total. So what ends up happening in the town center is really dependent on which property owners decide to participate, to develop and what kind of development they bring forward. So there's a pretty significant range. And it's important to say that how the town center develops will depend almost entirely on which property owners decide to participate, how they develop, when they develop and what kind of project they bring to the city for consideration. So we've looked at a number of different scenarios and the way we've thought about this is we're kind of setting the stage with a series of kit of parts and property owners are going to kind of bring their own parts together in their kind of own degree of interest and the city will, in effect, will not necessarily be the master planner. At best, they might be sort of a curator, sort of how the pieces come together. Go to the next slide, please. The other piece that we've included in the appendix is the two other configurations for Pine Street that we looked at. I believe we shared this with the commission at a previous meeting. They're still viable options, but not the preferred option based on past public input. So we're including them in the appendix because they still may have some merit and still warrant further consideration as the city moves forward entertaining the strategic plan. And then at the very end, I don't have it on the screen, and part of the presentation is we've also included the current mixed-use zoning as the appendix. So it's an easy reference to see what is currently allowed in the town center under today's rules. And with that, I thank you very much for your patience and your time this evening. My presentation is done. As I said, we are looking for your very thoughtful and constructive feedback on the ideas we've put forward. We will take that to heart and consult with Tom and other city staff, figure out how to best move the, kind of incorporate those thoughts into the document that we have before we bring it back to you for consideration again. We think at our next meeting with you that we would be asking you to take a vote on moving this forward to council. So really appreciate all your best ideas so we can make sure they're incorporated the next time we see you and you say, thank you, we've got our ideas included. So thank you very much.
Do I have any questions from the staff? Do I have any questions from anybody up on the commission?
I was curious from that, with that main property owner, had you had the opportunity to speak with him and whether you have or whether you have any impressions?
I defer to city staff on that. They've been a kind of liaison.
We've talked to him and given him a lot of invitations to comment on this and he's remained quiet. Yeah. And we, he's actually come to all the meetings, but when given the opportunity to speak, he's decided not to.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, before we open it for public question and comments, I'm going to ask that we limit our time to five minutes. Okay? So I'm going to open it up to the public. If one would come forward at a time due to COVID, I just want to have one at the microphone at a time, please. Would you please come up and sign in and say your name? No questions or comments? This is on the town center. On the town center only. Okay, seeing as there's no comments from the audience, I'm going to close it to the general public. Okay? Anybody else? Okay. And we will bring it back to our next meeting. Do we need to make a vote to bring it back?
I don't believe you need a vote. We'll itemize it or schedule it to the next appropriate meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and schedule that for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Going to go on to.
Can we go back?
Would you?
One comment, just on the, a couple comments.
That's fine.
Yeah, this is, yeah, we just got this last night, so we haven't had time, at least I haven't had time to do it in depth. But just a quick question and a comment. I like the idea of the first steps along Pine, just in general, and I particularly like the idea of the, of the trees to identify the city's center. I guess I would say with or without, as far as the trees, with or without the, the main property owner that's in there, you know, participating at this time or not, I think it's, I like, I like that idea of taking some steps, at least a step. And I think probably the trees are probably the easiest, as long as the city can maintain them and stuff like that. And I like the idea of doing something along, along Pine, again, with or without the, a commitment from the property owner at this time. I mean, I think that, I think that would go a long way to helping that area, just in general. Now, that's just, that's my statement, just to, just to start it and we want to schedule it later, think more about it. That's, that's the one thing that jumped out, two things that jumped out at me in the, in the presentation. A lot of it is, you know, a lot, a lot to digest and a lot to see that it happens, but I think, I think it's important to take a step, a couple steps, and that's my, that's my comment.
Comment you have for Pine, I was in Claremont, I'm trying to think, Claremont Villages is how I know it, but it's right there by the Claremont Men's Col-, or the Colleges. There's an area that's very old city, very, there's just no parking really to speak of. And I was there for, took a friend to lunch. I was surprised at how many people there were and we found parking. That was surprising to me because that area's never had good parking and yet they had a one whole street blocked off for a street fair market type stuff going on. They had people parking, no problems coming and going, and it was really different. I think doing that on Pine would have the same outcome. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearing, item A, conditional use permit 21-02. Can I get a staff report, please?
Chair Gross and members of the Planning Commission subdivision committee, zoning ordinance amendment 2102 is a consideration of a resolution recommending that the city council adopt, am I on the right one? No, I am not.
No, we're on 7A.
There it is. Okay, sorry about that. 21, conditional use permit 2102 is a consideration of a conditional use permit to allow a massage establishment in the general commercial zone at 3357 Cattella Avenue. The applicant is here with us tonight, William Tesh, he's in the back there. And the applicant is also the owner of Leon Jiu-Jitsu, which is in the same building where this would go. He's asking to, that the city allow a 1,013 square foot massage establishment near Leon Jiu-Jitsu in the same building. And the applicant says that the services will include Swedish massage, reflexology, and deep tissue massage, massage. The hours of operation for the business are proposed to be every day, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Of course, that would be if they became successful, that it would be, it would go to those hours. Over time, the establishment will have a height of approximately seven to 10 employees and three to five customers at any one time. That's, that's how the, the unit will be built out. The applicant tells staff they have never owned another massage establishment, but he is a licensed therapist with 15 years of experience and has worked at many different spas. The massage establishment use is included under the zoning code definition of personal services restricted. Each individual that performs a massage establishment must obtain a California Massage Therapy Council certificate, which you've seen about in the past. This CAMTC certificate is intended to protect the public by certifying massage professionals in California that meet certain requirements of the law and it provides the minimum standards for training for the masseuses. The proposed establishment owner, William Tesh, does not, does indeed have a CAMTC certificate. In addition to the CUP, the applicant will also be required to obtain a certificate of operation and a massage establishment operators permit, which we as staff provide to them after they go through a smaller background check through the police department. They will also be subject to the regulatory provisions of chapter 5.32 of the municipal code, which is about massage establishments. And the applicant, application considered tonight is for the massage establishment CUP and whether it's appropriate for this particular site. It, of course, rides with the land. The planning commission must make findings of support such as consistency with the general plan, municipal code, and existing and future land uses in the vicinity, as well as impacts to the public, convenience, interest, health, safety, and general welfare. The code enforcement department has inspected the location for this project and there were some building issues found that are needed to be addressed by the property owner and you'll see those in the resolution of approval. There are conditions toward the end that, and I have talked to the property owner and he understands these, these different things that need to be done. Staff recommends approval of the CUP with the further understanding that the tenant improvements must be accomplished by the applicant and the repairs done by the property owner after applying for and receiving building permits. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions of the staff?
No.
Okay, I'm going to have the applicant come forward and give us their comments on the project, please, before I open it to the public.
How's everybody doing tonight? Good? All right, that guy before me had a nice relaxing voice.
He was very, very nice. Okay, um, I'm actually a.
Could you give us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is William Tesh. And I'm actually a mentor of a lot of therapists. I've been doing massage therapy for a number of years and I've worked on the likes of Kobe Bryant, the Ducks. So the clinic that we're trying to get open would be, a reason why I'm thinking about opening is because of, I own the Leon Jiu-Jitsu school and I believe a lot of massage and deep tissue and lengthening of the muscles. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay, you're fine.
Yes.
Do we have any questions that you would like to ask of the applicant? No questions at this time? Or do you have one?
No.
Okay. You can sit, but you might want to sit closer up here.
Oh, okay.
Make it a little easier for you.
Well, let me introduce this, this gentleman here as well, just to let you know, he's a, one of my bosses when I worked for Burke Williams. He's the, one of the hiring managers for the massage therapist and him and I became really good friends. And out of 140 therapists when I was working there, I became the number one therapist. So just to let you guys know, I'm pretty good. All right, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to open it to the general public, however, I'd like to keep the comments to five minutes, please. And just to be safe for COVID restrictions, one at the microphone at a time, please. I have two up here. One of them is for Bruce Murphy. Did you want to come forward?
How are you tonight? Good. Good evening, Madam Chairman and fellow commissioners. My name is Bruce Murphy and I live at 10951 Walnut Street, across the street from the property seeking the conditional use permit at the corner of Cattella and Walnut Streets. I object to the approval on several levels. It is clearly in a residential area. There is current parking problems with the existing business on the corner. Children from Oak Middle School pass the massage parlor twice a day, once on the way to school and once on their way home. The property address is on Cattella, but is in the far north end of the lot, which puts it next door and across from residential properties. Currently in the early evening, people going to the martial arts studio in the lot park on both sides of Walnut, taking parking away from the residents. Students from Oak Middle School travel to school on the east sidewalks of Walnut Street in the morning and again in the afternoon. The crossing guard and the crosswalks are on that side of the street. This means that children will, will have to pass by the massage parlor twice a day. This establishes a full-body massage parlor hours to be 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The city of Los Alamos municipal code does not restrict where massage parlors can be located, but this does not mean it should be located that close to children traversing from school or in a residential area. I ask that you do not approve this conditional use permit because it is not in the best interest for the residents of the city of Los Alamos. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Emmanuel Espinoza.
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening, council members. How you guys doing tonight? I came to speak on behalf of William Tesh. I've known William Tesh for about 15 years now. And just to give you guys a little bit about my background, my background is about 25 years long in massage therapy. We're not masseuses, we're massage therapists. It's not a massage parlor, it's a massage clinic. So that's just a little education on what we do. I can understand apprehensions because there's such a stigma associated with what massage is. But to inform you about what massage is, massage is something that is very healing. It brings a better quality of life to people that are in chronic pain. Right now, I personally own a massage establishment in Irvine. It's called Massage Matters. We work on professional level athletes. Some of my clients there include UFC fighters. We work on professional boxers, we work on the Chargers. My intention is actually to do some consulting with Bill so that we can make that establishment as close to Massage Matters as possible. I invite you to look us up. It's massagemattersclinic.com. If you're on social media, our Instagram is the letter Y and Massage Matters. That way it gives you a little insight to what we really do. I've sat on advisory boards for schools. I've graduated out over 500 students of my own. This industry brings a lot of gainful employment to massage therapists. Not, again, not masseuses, but massage therapists. At a massage clinic, not a massage parlor. I came into the industry a long time ago when I used to have to get a license under, an adult performer's license. And I've had my share of being, you know, degraded as a massage therapist. And in 2009, the California introduced its state licensing program to us. So, I mean, if you look at it, we're only 11 years in to a state licensing for us. My job and my goal as a massage therapist and someone who has written curriculum, who has been an educator in this field, who has employed thousands of massage therapists, depending on what company I've run, you know, is to bring legitimacy to what we do. And I, I really hope that you guys do approve this because this is something good for the community. Over in Irvine, we've become a mainstay for Irvine. We've become more than the massage envies, more than the hand and stones, because we take a clinical approach to what we do. And coming in to consult for Bill, that's the approach that we'll be taking at his establishment is going to be a clinical approach. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else who would like to come forward and speak? Let me come forward.
Good evening, Chair, Madam Chairperson and the council. My name is Tai Chen. I'm the, we are the property owner. And I also live right next door to the property in question, 10951 Walnut Street.
Can you pull closer to the mic?
Yes, sorry. And we have known Bill for 10 years. And when he first talked to my father and I about it, you know, just like everybody else, we're taking a wee bit back. But we have known Bill for so long and we trust in his character. It is also in my very best interest, not just as property owner, but as a neighbor right next to the property, to keep the operation as wholesome as possible in a very professional manner. And I do trust that Bill will make it right. It's not going to be silly and, and, and becoming for this community. So I'm here just to speaking, sort of like a personal testament to Bill's character. I do believe that he will make it right. And I hope that perhaps we can work as neighbors to try to figure out how to address some of your concerns. And since we, we just live across the street.
Talk to the mic, though, please. Talk to us.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so, so hopefully we can work directly with the neighbors and, and come to a, some way of mitigating their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther?
Good evening, Madam Chairmembers. I live across the street from the establishment that they're talking about, the, the, the karate place and the, that little jiu-jitsu. And, sorry, I'm disrespecting you. But I think, you know, as, as a business owner, I can see where they're looking at it as a viable way maybe to enhance their visions and so forth. But as an owner, my sister and I, of the property, and we live there, that's our home. And the problem with the noise from the, it's, from the jiu-jitsu? Karate?
Brazilian jiu-jitsu.
Sorry. The Brazilian jiu-jitsu doesn't end at 5 o'clock. It doesn't end at 7 o'clock. It doesn't end at 9 o'clock sometimes. And the parking, we can't get parking on the street sometimes because these cars are going in and out of the street, and there's just not enough room. And then, like, may I ask a question of this gentleman here?
Sure.
Okay. Your establishment, which, congratulations, it sounds like you've accomplished something with yourself.
But talk to us when you ask him the question.
Oh. Look at you, but...
No, you're fine. I just, you have a mic you need to use.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is your establishment in a residential area, or is it totally commercial?
So I'm in, I'm in Irvine. We're in a retail space, but there is residential areas.
Housing around, but are you on the same block and across, or across the street like we are?
Yeah, we're in California.
See, that, that's the issue. It's just the traffic. And I honestly am concerned, and I believe I speak for my sister. You know, if, if someone asks, you know, what's around there and, and, you know, unfortunately, the, the term massage sometimes does have a different connotation for different people. So, you know, for property values, if we ever would, would think of, of selling or something, you know, that's another concern of what would be around there. But it's really the parking. And as a resident, it's just difficult to be around the establishments where there are people coming and going all the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to come forward and speak?
Good evening, Ava Hilt. And sister mentioned that we're the owners across the street at 10951. When I try to get into Walnut Street, the traffic gets lined up. Nowadays, you have to go to the, my sister's place before Oak Street lets out. The traffic is horrendous. You can't get into the residential area. They mentioned that there's going to be about five or six employees or maybe more. Where are they going to park? Double park, the, is it jiu-jitsu? That's right on the corner. Just consider the parking. I think you have all seen the parking when Oak Street starts in the morning. Also, the parking when they let out every day. It's horrendous. I happen to have the same gardener that is at 10951. And his, he parked to, he can't park at all half the time. So he parked a little ways down, and he got broken into last week, right on Walnut Street. So you want to bring in more cars onto Walnut? That's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have anybody else who would like to speak on this particular item?
Can I readdress something real quick about parking? And the hours of operations of the jiu-jitsu school?
Yes.
So I feel like everything is, is about parking right now. The jiu-jitsu school has a morning class between 9:30 and 11:30. After 11:30, the school's not open again until 5:30. So there is no one there. We're making it sound like the parking is taken all day long and all night long. It opens again for the kids program. And Bill does have a sizable kids program because, again, he, he helps these kids of the community out. All these kids are from Los Alamos, and they are from Rossmore, that he's devoting his time to, to, to better their lives. But that parking, again, is taken between 5:30 and about 8:30, so another three hours. The massage establishment is going to be very minimal as far as parking because, again, peak time for massage therapy is more middle of the day when classes are out for jiu-jitsu, if that makes any sense. So you're going to have five parking spots at most taken by employees and a possible three spots by clientele. So there's eight parking stop, spots that'll be taken during non-peak hours for jiu-jitsu. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak again?
Yes.
One of the issues on parking, during the day, people go to work. So the 9 o'clock class is not going to cause an issue. But at 5:30, people are coming home. And from what you said in your report, Tom, it's seven employees and three customers, typical. There's 10 more parking spots that we don't have. So that means that the streets now are going to be parked with people who don't live there. So the people who live there just don't have any parking. As well as making a statement, the peak hours for the massages, you, you don't know yet. It's not even open. So you have to assume, I guess, whatever standard in your area, it's probably the same, but it's not the same area, so we don't know yet. So parking is without a doubt the biggest issue. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it back up here. Do I have any comments from the commissioners?
Just, just a question of staff regarding parking. As far as, we, we have parking requirements we have to adhere for, for the sites. Does the use qualify there? Are they meeting that parking?
Yes, they are. And the one thing that is different about this building from other buildings is the fact that half of the parking is behind the building, and a lot of people just don't see that.
All right, okay. Then, and I, and I would just say that the, the issue before us is the massage establishment, it's not the jiu-jitsu operation. So I think we have to kind of temper that just a little bit. If there are other issues pertaining to the jiu-jitsu establishment, I think that's a different discussion for a different day and probably with, you know, it's just, there's a process, I imagine. If, if there is a problem going on, people can come to the city and, and go from there with respect to that. So I just, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, we're here about the massage establishment and, on that. I can continue just for a quick second, I'll be done. I, I can appreciate the comments about the massage with, with respect to the negative connotations, but also with the comments made by the applicant and his, and Manuel? Emmanuel. I can relate a little bit to that. I've have a, I had a daughter that had a severe problem, back problem. And nothing worked. Young girl, I mean, in her teens. And finally, the only thing that did help was massage. And to this day, I mean, when her back acts up, she's, gets a massage and, you know, and, and she's in Irvine, so she may be one of your, your clients. I, I don't even, I don't know. But in any, but in any event, and then also just recently, and it, it didn't even dawn on me about the athletics and the sports. I've got a grandson who's a swimmer in Arizona, 16 years old. He's in high school. And, and prior to competitions, my daughter, he works out, he lifts weights, stuff like that, as part of his swimming training. Also, just recently, went to massage to have him stretched out and everything prior to, to meet, to the swim meets. Fantastic. He's now a ranked swimmer. I mean, he's, you know, quarter second off of an Olympic, or second off in Olympic trial time, I mean, age 16. And my, and it's, I think all part of this working together with respect to training, but also to see how it works with athletes as well. And I mean, and I could, I could envision, or I could see a customer base of athletes out of the high school and stuff like that. I mean, Los Alamos has been, I'm sure still is, a powerhouse in some of the sports. And I can see how it can all dovetail together. So I'm, that's my comment.
For staff, just for clarification of the record.
He can't hear you. Excuse me.
For staff, this is for clarification of the record on page seven. It states 22 spaces. When you look at the diagram, there's the, there's the front parking lot or the parking lot on, at the front of the building. You, you alluded to spaces in the back. Are those the spaces at the top of the page?
Let me grab that real quick. Oh, there we go.
Page seven, right there, Tom.
Yeah, on the top.
Okay.
Those are the extra ones that you, that people often don't know about there.
Maybe this would be some signage to direct people to additional parking.
You know, while we're at it, we can say that, you know, that Leon Jiu-Jitsu, while you're running that place, maybe ask the parents to drop off and not necessarily stay around. You know, that's...
That's good for me. It's better.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Anybody else have some questions or comments?
What's currently in this location?
It was a countertop business for, with marble. You'll notice there's a piece of marble. Just kind of screwed up to the side of the building. That used to be the sign for the marble company. Marble counter.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I think, you know, we've had some things like this come before us. I know we had something similar to this come before us several years ago, where a pawn shop wanted to go into that location. And the, the challenge is, while the applicant seems like he's, you know, I, I'm a believer in massage, massage therapy, very effective. My wife goes and gets a massage, and it's like life-changing for her, you know? So I, I totally, you know, understand the benefits. The challenge is with the CUP runs with the land, right? So we can't, I, I mean, I've never been one to make a determination based upon the merits of the owner because you guys might not always be in that business, right? The CUP goes to the next person that takes that space over, and they might not run the same kind of business that you run, right? So I, I think the question, for me and for this commission is, you know, do we feel like a massage establishment run by either this applicant or, or another future applicant is appropriate in that location given the proximity to residential, the, the school kids walking by and, and all that stuff? I mean, it's, it's one of those tough things. So that's what I'm considering right now.
Chair Gross, if I may, just, just perhaps to provide some additional detail or perhaps assurances here. It is absolutely accurate that CUP runs with the land and will remain affixed to the property unless someone abandons that use or there is a revocation of the rights granted by the CUP. But it is worth mentioning that any massage establishment in the city is subject to our chapter 532 massage establishment regulations. One condition built into the CUP is that whoever's operating from that site has to comply with chapter 5.32, which does contain the city's regulations. And then if there ever were a, a change in ownership or another operation in that facility who is not abiding by those rules, you would have a basis to actually revoke the CUP and to address those issues, so.
Okay.
It's something to consider.
So with that in consideration, other massage establishments in town... So, with that in consideration, other massage establishments in town, do we have issues with how those businesses are run? Or is everything above board? Does the city keep a close eye on that stuff?
Yeah, without going into the specifics of individual businesses, just because I don't want to go too far field from what we're looking at here. What I can tell you, it is, those businesses are reviewed on a consistent basis by the Code Enforcement Department and staff and PD to determine whether there are issues that need to be addressed with respect to our code. So, it is a highly regulated area within the city. It is a highly regulated field as far as the state licensure goes, and it is something that we definitely keep an eye on in the city.
Okay, that's very sure.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I think the only other thing I'd like to add is, a number of people have talked about the parking issues, right? And this may exacerbate that or not. We have parking standards in the city, and those are tied to our development standards. And that's what we, that's what we go off of, right? So, the challenge we have up here is, I know there's parking issues in that neighborhood. There's, you know, I think there's probably a lot of people who aren't parking their cars in their garage in that neighborhood, and there's other things like that happening. I mean, it happens in my neighborhood too, right? I'd say most people don't park their cars in their garage. Some of them don't park their cars on their driveways. I had someone at my house the other day, I had a neighbor leave a note on one of my guests' house about, "Go park in front of your own house," right? I've lived there for 21 years. First time I ever had a note, I was kind of shocked. But, you know, parking's an issue everywhere. And, you know, I think, working with the business owner, talking with him about it, trying to come up with some positive solutions, getting the city engaged in some of that stuff, and trying to, you know, trying to work on that stuff as a community could possibly be beneficial, not just for the residents in the area, but also for the business owner, right? I mean, if he doesn't know that there's a problem, then he can't be a part of fixing it. So, I would, I'm just throwing that out there, that I think that would be a positive discussion to have. And I think the city would support assisting with that.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
I'll make a motion to approve CUP 21-02.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. Okay. Give him just a second. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Careful, careful. All right. Okay. Staff report on Item B, 18-03, please.
All right. Chair Gross and members of the Planning Commission, conditional use permit 1803M is a consideration of a modification to a conditional use permit, which was CUP 1803, to allow a 561-square-foot expansion of an existing 480-square-foot massage establishment in the general commercial zone at 10775 Los Alamos Boulevard. The applicant's here with us tonight, Carlita Johnson, right there in front. She owns Melt Spa. That's the name of this business. And the business was approved in May of 2018 and has been successful. So, the applicant is in need of more space for her, her business. The applicant says she will add facials and skincare to the services. With the requested expansion, the unit would become 1,041 square feet altogether. Of course, it will be subject still to Section 5.32 of the municipal code. And she does have a CAMTC license certificate as well. She will hire anyone, I mean, anyone she hires will have CAMTC certificates as well. And staff does recommend approving the expansion of this massage establishment through the CUP modification, with the understanding that tenant improvements must be accomplished by the applicant before, by applying for building permits to get to make those changes to the unit. And there are also conditional, additional conditions added to the resolution as well that our code enforcement officer wanted to add as well, to bring the building up to code. There were some loose wires and things like that, and the property owner knows about these. The massage establishment remains subject to the codes, and so staff feels that having met those codes for three or four years now, they've shown that they're a good massage establishment business. So, we recommend approval.
Thank you. Excuse me for one moment. Could somebody please ask them to move away from the door? They're a little bit distracting. Everybody gets a fair chance. Don't do that to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Have to thank her when she comes back. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Do I have any questions here of the staff by the commissioners? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak?
Good afternoon, or good evening, I think. I am the owner of Melt Massage and Spa. I have been, I think, what's the word I'm looking for? Very beneficial to this community. Just like the other gentleman said, I'm a therapist, and I specialize in pain management, range of motion, and, or, or, I can't even speak now. I'm so nervous. It's medical massage. I haven't had any violations. I think I've got a lot of reviews on Yelp that are very positive. They're all five stars. Yeah.
Hey, would you like to give us your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Carlita Johnson.
Thank you. Do I have any questions of the commissioners of the applicant?
No.
Nope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I see the business is growing.
I'm going to open it up to the general public. I'm going to ask that anybody who comes forward, only speak for five minutes or less, please. Do I have anybody who would like to come forward? Seeing as how nobody's coming forward, I'm going to bring it back up and close the general public. Do I have any comments or questions of the commissioners?
I'll move approval.
Do you have a second?
I'm thinking we have plenty of massage places now.
A second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Good luck.
Congratulations.
You have to admit, it is nice to hear positive growth during COVID. You do have to admit.
Can I say something? This is, this is my daughter, and I come, I live in Ohio. So, when I want really good massages, I come to Yelp.
We do understand that. Thank you. Okay. Item C, 21-02, please.
Okay. Chair Gross and members of the Planning Commission, zoning ordinance amendment 2102 is a consideration of a resolution recommending the city council adopt an amendment concerning single-family residential parking requirements. At the April 28, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, Commissioner Lowe expresses concerns that the single-family dwelling parking unit, parking requirements enacted in the 2019 code update were inconsistent with the direction provided by the Planning Commission to staff and the city's planning consultant during the code amendment drafting phase. By vote of the Planning Commission, the item was placed on the agenda for discussion at the next regular meeting. On June 23, 2021, the Planning Commission initiated a zoning ordinance amendment and directed staff to return with a resolution recommending the parking requirement changes for single-family dwellings and all residential units be reduced to a maximum of two covered parking spaces per dwelling, irrespective of the total building bedroom count and in all codes, I mean, in all zones. If approved by the Planning Commission, the draft resolution recommends city council approval of ZOA 2102. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do I have any questions of the staff? No questions? I will open it up to the general public, but they've all left. So, I'm going to close it and bring it back to the commission. Thank you. Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve ZOA 21-02.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Go ahead.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Staff report?
There is none.
There isn't it? Items from the Community Development Director?
I'm going to ask, Tom, you have anything for the commission?
We did want to talk to the commission, Commissioner Sofolcannic mentioned that he would like to have a tour of the, the Los Alamos luxury apartments as they're being built, and we were interested if others would like to go as well. And then that way, we can, really, okay. So, yeah, we'll invite all of you. We'll figure out a day next week.
We'll reach out to the property owner, and we'll try to figure out, so my experience with the recreation, we do a annual parking facility tour during a recreation, Parks and Recreation, Culture, Art Commission meeting. So, we'll reach out to the property owner, see if he is available during that time as well. So, maybe we can do it during a Planning Commission meeting, maybe take a field trip, you know? But if that doesn't work out for the property owner, then we'll reach out and.
Are they nearing completion? Are they finished?
They're nearing on Building A, which is the big, long one, and then Building B, they're going to finish a few months later. But they're moving along very quickly. They're working on landscaping now, and the pool's all in and everything, so it's amazing. It's, every week, it's a totally different place, so, amazing.
I guess I might have spoke to you, because, again, I'm not used to that this meeting does get recorded. So, I guess I got to speak to Michael about how we're going to figure that out. But, yeah, yeah, we'll work through that, and we'll report back to the commission.
You might not want to mention my name because I voted against that project.
Is that a normal, I mean, we've never done that, at least since I've been on there. Is that a normal?
I don't know. I just, Tom said he had.
It's an amazing thing to see. I mean, just looking down that hallway, it's like a mile long, is pretty amazing. And the amount of workers they have there is incredible, just people flying in and out of apartments and doing everything. It's incredible to see, so, yeah.
I have a question. The presentation with the Town Center plan, they said they wanted us to come back next meeting and vote. To what degree, I mean, there's a lot to digest here. I don't think I'm going to be ready to vote for approval. I mean, there's three different, three different scenarios for, for Green Street.
Yeah, you're not going to vote for a specific plan or whatever. You're basically approving the document that we have here. So, the document there will say that this is the recommended action, which is a landscape model. But then, like he pointed out, that they have the other three options in there as well. So, you're just, you're approving the document itself. You're not really approving like, "I want to go with this route, or I want this building to look like this." So, today was to provide feedback and comment or any type of revision, right? And so, in my email, I did, you know, it was a little short notice that I sent it out there. So, you know, we do have it where you can go back, or whether it's this weekend or next weekend. And when you're reviewing it or looking over, you could just email us any type of comments or revisions.
You heard my questions in the prior meeting regarding, you know, the requested zone amendments. I just don't want to, not without getting too deep into it, but to create a, not a, not conforming issue for property owners that are around, because we had that, we had a mob in here when we were doing.
Correct. Yeah, so, you know, Placework with Alan and Logan, they were here for that workshop, so they heard you. And so, we will address it in our, we have biweekly meetings with them.
But once we vote, if we.
I'm not sure it'll come back the very next meeting either, where we've got to talk to, the Town Center Mixed Use guys are also talking with the Housing Element people to make sure that they're in sync with each other. And so, that may take a little bit of time. The housing element, we have to do very quickly, because that is due very quickly. But Town Center Mixed Use Zone, we can push a little bit, so.
Whatever revisions we do, we will provide you ample time to review that before you come back in, do a recommendation.
As long as an approval vote doesn't make it very rigid, you know, still want some flexibility to amend it as we, as we see fit, as it progresses.
Yeah, those different recommendations of things to do, those will come to each one separately as a staff report as well and a vote, you know, to change the dwelling units per acre or the setbacks or the things like that, yeah.
Anything else, Tom?
Uh, no.
I have to tell you, since I live right near those apartments that are going up, watching the workers, the one thing, you have to say, all these people come and go, and there hasn't been a parking problem. It's weird. I don't know where they're parking, but I know they're not in the street.
Yeah.
And so, it can be done. Things can be done. We can work together, so.
They're parking, probably in that parking structure.
That might be. I don't know. I don't.
Yeah.
Looking at it, I've sat there going, it's amazing, but.
Yeah, I bet that parking structure is crazy.
Yeah, underground one, yeah. I mean, on the first floor, yes, yeah. It's huge, yeah. Yep, yep.
Thank you. Do I have any commissioner reports?
Hold on. Chair, I have a couple items. I just want to make sure. Michael, you have any items? No? So, I just want to alert the chair that Serve Los Allos is coming up, right? So, Serve Los Allos kicks off the week of Los Alamos, and that's hosted by our Recreation and Community Services Department. So, Serve Los Allos, there's a Friday night service project date, which is on September 10. And then September 11th is, they have a general assembly kicking off. It's held at Little Cottonwood Park. They're going to have a 9/11 ceremony, because I believe, if my memory is right, it's the 25th anniversary or?
20th.
20th anniversary. So, they're going to have a ceremony at 8:15, again, at Cottonwood Park. And then, of course, there's service projects there. There's also a health expo, a pet expo. And again, Serve Los Allos kicks off the week of Los Allos. So, there's other activities, like on September 12th, there's a family day that's held at the community center. On September 14th and 15th, there's art workshop for children. On September 17th, which is a Friday, there's a glow run. So, if you recall, a lot, the past several years, though, we had Race on the Base, which was held on the Joint Forces Training Base, we're actually bringing the race back onto the streets of Los Alamos. So, again, it kicks off on Friday with the glow run, and on Saturday, September 18th, is the 5K, 10K, again, Race Los Allos. So, if you need more information, or the public needs more information, please visit the city's website, www.cityoflosalamos.org, register for a race, or just check out the whole activity. We are closing Pine Street on Saturday, and there you have a whole list of activities, from music groups to dance groups. There's going to be vendors out there, activities for the children. So, again, we, I want to emphasize that we start off with Serve Los Allos, and it kicks off Week of Los Allos, ending on 9/18 with a street fair on Pine Street.
Can I ask a quick question? Is, will the Race on the Base and the triathlon ever be coming back? Is that TBD?
It's to be determined. Right now, we're trying to, so right now, this year, it's 5K, 10K, and we're hoping for the future. We've had preliminary talk with the school district to utilize their brand-new pool to do a triathlon.
Okay. Is there a reason that we can't do it on the base? Is it tighter because of COVID, or?
No, you know, it's just, we had a. No, you know, just, we had a, how do you call it, a, like an inkling or a request to bring the race back into the street, make it more of a community. When we did Race on the Base, it was like, well, we advertised it as a regional draw, and so the participation of residents was very limited. And so we've kind of had a request to kind of make it more of a community event. So one way we thought about that was, you know, bring it back to the streets. Little tidbit is, my very first year, I worked the last race that went through, that started off on Oak Street and went through Rossmore.
Yeah.
So I remember that vividly. So that's the reason why. And secondly, too, is the base, I mentioned it earlier in the Housing Element Workshop, General Leeny at the RMAC meeting yesterday talked about a lot of construction or base improvement, and every time they do construction or base improvement, it greatly impacts our logistic of the race.
Yeah.
So that's why I said it's to be determined. Maybe a few years down the line, when everything kind of slowed down on the base, we might go back.
Okay. Yeah, I really enjoyed, I mean, I did the triathlon, I don't know, I probably did it six or seven times, and I had a bunch of people that would do it. Because, you know, it was a very achievable triathlon.
Correct. Flat surface.
Yeah.
You're not dealing with vehicle traffic.
Personally, I would like to see it come back. I have some friends who would like to see it come back.
Yeah.
So I was just curious about that.
Oh, yeah, you know, going on the, on the street, I had meetings with Recreation to go over the traffic control plan. Being on the base makes it a lot easier. We don't have to deal with closures of streets and outreach and all that stuff.
Yeah, they got all that parking.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And anything else?
That is it. Thank you.
Okay. And commissioner reports? Okay. Just to echo, the recreation brochure has all of it, because I brought mine, and I already signed up for Serve Los Allos for both days, so I think it's great. I really appreciate the hard work the city's doing that way. I do want to say thank you to the staff here, because I actually sent a request to have the Traffic Commission look at a problem that I saw, and I know it was already dealt with. And so when we have things up here and the community needs to know, don't just sit down. I wrote a letter to you guys, and it was dealt with in no time flat. So I do appreciate that. Okay? Anything else? If not, thank you, everybody, and see you next month. And going to close the meeting.